Articles, so senior spotlights are there for you to review as well as information about our esports team, which placed third in the country in a national game gaming tournament. So that that particular sports team has really taken off. We have two really strong coaches, tremendous participation from our students, and they've just really done a wonderful job. Any short comments?
Mary.
Moving on to communications. Okay. And then next up is our genocide education grant.
Yes, so I'd like to introduce history teacher Lauren Delant, who will present information regarding the grant she received for genocide education. So let me just bring up her presentation and I'll turn it over to Lauren.
I teach rest two, I teach rest one, I also teach basic history, civil rights course. Over the course of the last year and this year, I applied for the genocide education grant, where we have gotten a total of close to $60,000 from the state to increase our awareness and education regarding genocide. And that also includes different strategies that I implement within the classroom, also bringing in experts in the field within the study of genocide. This actually really started for me in the summer of 2022. I attended a professional development opportunity called Upstander Academy. And it really worked hand in hand with trying to figure out how do you become an upstander? How do you inspire others to be an upstander? So from that, I, it was one of those life-changing experiences that I knew that I wanted to bring to our community. So I have brought a few of the scholars that I've worked with from quite a few different indigenous nations to recognize the genocide of indigenous people and also experts in the field of genocide studies, including Emmy award-winning researcher Michi Lesser. So one of the ideas that I had for this proposal was to increase our awareness and our education opportunities for our community. And so it really started within the students. This past year, I implemented Indigenous knowledge of community building, where we created a circle structure of our classroom and implemented that on a day-to-day basis, where over this past school year, in my nine years of teaching, I have witnessed the most engagement and conversation, open dialogues, that I've ever seen in my career. So with that, I became inspired to try and offer that also to adults in our community. And so with the second proposal for the state trust fund, I proposed to create an adult course for our community members, where we would take and implement components of facing history, where you use our identity to understand ourselves better and to understand how to really face and confront hard history. That includes, you know, a lot of different topics regarding prejudice and discrimination and biases that are still continuing today. And so in my conversations with scholars, we have found this to be the antidote to the intolerance that we might experience within communities and just trying to better understand one another, trying to listen to one another. So I'll be implementing this course where we will offer 18 classes over next school year. There'll be night courses or night class that we are going to welcome community members to sign up to or sign up for. And it's one of those situations where you would commit to all 18 if you can. Of course, we know that there's some flexibility, right? So it would be first offered for any adults, parents, aunts, uncles, community members in that regard. And then if there's still spots open, we'll open it up to any educators or staff, up to members within our school community as well. So this will also include, so it is fully funded, but the grant that we had applied for and got approved for. And as I've been part of this community, I've really opened up and branched out my networking abilities with some really incredible scholars that I'll be able to bring into our community as well. So, you know, I have my mission here. In the words of Maya Angelou, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then when you know better, do better." So this class is offering adults in our community an opportunity to know better so that we can collectively do better, which really stems from learning untold stories and unlearning patterns and misinformation so that we can all grow together in a safe space. So I will be providing that safe space with my learned expertise in this field and really challenging us to step up into that brave, you know, tap into that brave energy. So some of my goals for this course over next school year for the adults would be, of course, to create a safe learning environment where we can be human and allow others to be human, be open and curious about our own beliefs of ourselves and the world that we live in, provide tools and strategies to address our own biases and positionality, guide participants on their own quest of learning to learn and how to find credible information. We'd also use dynamic approaches that do include Indigenous knowledge of community building that allow participants to interrogate different realities and perceptions and also provide opportunities for participants to read and engage in meaningful dialogue that is rooted in respect for one another and our own experiences.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions?
I have, I do have a question. You know, we have very diverse population of families. And I'm wondering how we can make this accessible to all of our families, including maybe some of our families who don't speak English as a first language or maybe have some other sort of obstacles too.
Absolutely, thank you for that question. So there is flexibility in the grant that we designed to ensure that if we do need translators, we'll be able to provide that.
Are you going to do, put a field in early? So you have an idea of what kind of space are you going to need?
Yes, so I was anticipating using my classroom space, where I do use the circle dynamic and just keeping it really simple in that, in that way. Less is more in that regard. And I found it to be incredibly enriching experience so far. So so far, my plan is to use my classroom.
How many adults do you aim for?
My goal would be to cap at about 30. And I, but I can work with no less than that as well.
May I just ask a quick question?
Okay.
What is the amount of the grant?
So this particular one was about 29,000. And there is going to, part of this course curriculum development to include more lens in different areas. And it's also incorporating a workshop that we're going to be opening up to more educators within our sending districts to have professional development with the facilitators and creators of Upstander Project.
And I may have missed this, what is the source of the grant?
It is the, it's Massachusetts Department of Education. It's a trust fund for, specifically for genocide. And so in our work together, we have found that being able to create this space and having this exchange of information has been incredibly, it's been incredibly life-altering in certain senses, where we really get to question and challenge our own conditioning and really understand historical trauma and how that can have an intergenerational impact and how do we then heal that within ourselves and our own families. And one of our, one of the concepts that a dear friend, a scholar that I've worked with from the Upstander Project has talked about this idea of survivance, where, you know, when we do confront hard history, it's important to stay tethered to the fact that our ancestors might have all gone through something incredibly horrific. However, we can stay tethered to the fact that they survived. And we know that because we are here in this room and are proof of that. And so by staying in tethered to that, we can then confront those hard truths.
Thank you for pursuing this. This is so important. Thank you.
You kind of already asked it. I was, I was going to ask if, I know you mentioned that we were looking for more community members than staff, but that maybe it would be open to staff depending on numbers. But then I was going to say, you know, are we extending this to maybe staff locally? So you kind of answered that.
So we did provide, Upstander Project has come and done an intensive eight-hour workshop with some of our staff and faculty that chose to participate in the, not this past spring, but the spring before. And then it was just, there was such a great response from the participants and they just wanted more. So then that's when I reapplied and we were able to get another grant. And so then open it up. So it might not be an eight-hour workshop, but it's going to be a half-day. And we are planning to open it up to more community members.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lauren, can I just ask you to introduce yourself?
Absolutely. So I actually, stuff I brought. So this is my mentor, Ms. Amy, she taught in Hatch. So she actually, we met because of this wonderful place. She was my mentor and she has inspired me so much. I feel like I could cry just talking about her. So she has inspired me. She was actually the one that pushed me to go to Upstander Project. And she's always challenging me to confront my own, my own conditioning and just, you know, challenging me in so many wonderful ways. Sometimes it can be, you know, hard always to challenge yourself. So having somebody that's so supportive was foundational to this work that I've been able to do. So, and of course, she came to support me just as I'm able to. She retired on Cape Cod. After 13 years teaching here at Southeastern. So, and I was fortunate enough to be able to bring the curriculum Lauren spoke about, facing history in ourselves, which has a lot of components. The one that I taught was the Holocaust. I was just talking about, what did I teach? I used to teach death in the very best way possible, the human way, as Lauren so eloquently talked about. So I'm so happy to be here to support her. And I hopefully, I'm pretty sure I'm invited to be one of the guest teachers. So when we talk about the experts in the field, she will be coming in, running and facilitating a workshop about antisemitism and the Holocaust. So she is an expert in that field. And I feel truly grateful to be able to bring her and her expertise into this as well, so.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you so much.
Moving on, we're going to have our facilities and events presentation with Scott Nelson and Paul Riley.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
My name's Paul Riley. I'm head of maintenance and conference and events. I'm going to start. Scott's going to finish. Going through this, when Holly asked us to present this, I went through my phone, my computer, all the pictures we'd taken. And I found our last, last time we presented in front of you, it was 2018, 2019. So it's been a little while. So I had 150 slides, but I cut it down. Don't worry. Scott and I are not getting any younger. We can hardly get, we're done with these.
But we're going to try and scroll fast so it looks like a movie.
Again, I'm head of maintenance and conference and events. Scott's facilities engineer. I'll start with, of course, our theater, our latest big addition. We started our theater, you guys, some of you guys, there's some new faces and some old faces. But we started during COVID, believe it or not. Took us a good year and a half to finish, but we dug, broke ground. That's actually a picture of us, we built it on top of our septic system, our old septic system. We put a new one in there, filled it with the septic system there. I'll go to the next slide. This is SPAC, the exterior. It's beautiful at night. We've been using it quite a bit. Also in the future, we'll use it a lot more, but our school has really grown because of it. The interior, we just added a new screen. Some of you have seen it working. With the theater came Dave Warhead, our media tech. And as you guys know, he helps out here. He helps out with school, but he's a big part of the theater. I can do small stuff, but Dave takes over the big stuff, the shows and anything like that and the screen. We hope to use it more in the future. Okay? So with SPAC, we have set design. So you guys, I know a lot of you guys have gone to the shows and stuff and that opened up a whole new area for both me and Scott and our staff. We have Pat Mills, who's a second shift lead on maintenance, and he's a very good carpenter. Joe Cunha, who works with him, he's a custodian, but he has a lot, a lot of different skills that we have discovered over the years. This is Clue, one of our first shows. That set behind there was done by those two. Scott helped design it and a bunch of our students from electrical, carpentry, plumbing, doesn't matter what shop, Cosmo, we get them all together and we build these sets.
It's extremely collaborative. So you, so when you look at the sets, realize that we're building these based on the cover of a playbill. That's all we have. And then we have to gauge it by the size of the stage, how it's going to be, what the, what the line of vision is going to be. It's pretty interesting, but it's very collaborative.
This is the most recent one, from a few years. We have some shows back to back, back to backs, some graduations, some painting ceremonies in the theater. So in between all those, we got to fit the set in there. Because the set is permanent, screwed down through the stage. So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, four days?
Yep.
Four days to build a set. And same, the same crew did it with students. This set here, our drama teachers were looking it up. They could have gone to California, shipped here. Can you imagine what that would have cost?
Just the rental was $19,000.
$19,000. So we decided to build it ourselves. Scott gets together with the guys, Chris Bros, James Fernandez, show, the show pitches. And that's, and that's what you get. We built this in four days.
Oh, really?
So most of the material was recycled from our other sets. So we have a container on the other side of the building where we dismantle, we save what we can save and reuse. So that full set cost us about $600 in labor.
And there's the finish. You guys, whoever went to the show, you saw it. The students came, the drama students came and did all the painting and all of that. So it was really challenging. The next day after the last show, I got to tell this story. We had a step show. They had to practice and then a step show. That night, I had, I didn't tell them before. I told them that night when they came, the second shift, the end of students, "Grab your screw guys, let's go. Will you get that down?" They did it one night, took it down, so we could have the step, step show that day. We tried to bring like more music, more concerts, you know, even to the public. This was students in 2020 who graduated. Obviously COVID was there and the building wasn't built yet. They wanted to have a last concert. They never, they never got to do it. So they came back with their own music teacher and we did a one-night concert in the SPAC. It was kind of a freestyle thing. Wasn't a heck of a lot of people came, but you know what? Their attitude and their enthusiasm about coming back. The fellow graduates, I actually recognized some of them, obviously the young adults now. It was, it was a great, it was a great night and they totally enjoyed themselves. So we'll get to the events for the rest of the school. The cafeteria, we're growing so much, as you guys know. Our graduation class getting bigger and bigger every year. This is our cafeteria. We had an old screen up there. We took down a few years ago, wasn't working or whatever. To open up more space in the cafeteria so you can do presentations, because now we have multiple events going on at once. We ended up, Scott and I ended up going online, bought this ourselves and our guys installed it with a little help from IT. And we have a beautiful screen in there so they can do more events. You guys remember this, the Yost event? You know, try to dress up the cafeteria. That was a good night for all of us. Back in the SPAC, we do SDI, small SDI graduations. They have multiple graduations. If it's too big, we go in the gym. We do pin ceremonies for all the dental, nursing, all in the theater. We went back in the CAF. This was a Metro South Regional Roundtable that we had in the CAF. This was our Knights of Columbus. This was probably a good year ago. We did it on a Sunday, which, which is cool. We set it up, looking really nice and our culinary students come in. They came in on a Sunday morning to do brunch. It was a huge hit in the Knights of Columbus.
Darren, we were packed.
We was packed, yeah. This was a few years ago, obviously. We had another roundtable in the CAF, the mayor. And of course, so why we all have. Every year, our graduation, this year was huge. Probably over 2,800 people. We do over 2,000 chairs and you get to bleach it. Scott, so the student project, I ran this, but Scott is a big, big lead on having our students after-school program. We actually run it now. We got five to six students working for us after-school. They usually work at 6 o'clock at night. They get paid, like their regular job. And our crew is really bonded with all of them. And again, it's plumbing, electrical. It doesn't matter, we are a company. And one of his first rules is just because you're a company, you're going to be used to electrical. You can do some, I'm really shocked at it with my custodians, believe, believe in.
Does it mean anything you ask them to do?
Anything you ask them to do. It's unbelievable. The kids come in. You know, the first month, whatever, they're so quiet, whatever. After about six months, they're, they're right with us.
Yeah, we keep getting rid of them.
During lunch, they sneak down, you know, talk to us and it's, it's pretty good. So this bathroom renovation, bathrooms, we have the stainless steel. Yeah, so they, they get kind of beat up over the years and I've been dying to replace them. So I took one, one student with a lead, Patrick Mills, and said, "Hey, what can we do with these? You know, be controlled." So we took them out, a student boxed them out, sheet rocked it and re-tiled it. And this is what they throw away now. They can kick that, break that, do whatever they want. They will, doesn't matter. That was a, but they were only $20, not $800. This was a plumbing student who's doing tile work and tile work and.
His main assistant was a girl from criminal justice.
Criminal justice, one more. And also doing mason work, believe it or not. That's down in the gym, who's, who's all brick and mortar. He did all that, took it out, boarded it. And he actually tried to make it look like cinder block. He boarded it and put the walls in and then we eventually paved it. But that's one of the things we're both really, really proud of with the students, again, the students involved with facilities. You know, maybe someday it'll be head of facilities.
And we use, and we use the students during the school year. That's part of their trial for the summer. So like this year, we have seven of them that we're going to hire for the summer and they do summer projects with us as well. And they work full-time, which we figure, a trade, a trade school kids, it's better to work here than gear week.
Right, you got to do summer, yeah.
And they, and they all love it. So we probably went through, what, maybe 15 kids this year?
Yes.
That have come through. And transportation tends to like rear its ugly head for the summer. And then we also have them that we look at it as you have kids that just aren't ready. So we give them a shot. We try, we have the conversations. We don't treat them like students, all right? We treat them like they're employees. So that's what we teach, we tell them. You come to the, you come to the office after school, you now grab your badge. You grab a walkie-talkie because you're getting paid, you're an employee, you're no longer a student. Now you have to act like that because you, you're a reflection of the facilities department. And it's really a good program. And we've been running it since the second year we got here.
Yeah.
And it's been really successful.
So I'll turn the, turn the rest over to Scott. This is basically their guts and the interior of the building and Scott makes it all up.
So we're doing, as you know, from doing the, going through the budgets and all and the meetings we've had with that, for the few people that have sat with us, we have a lot of major projects going on this year. It's absolutely crazy. So we have a boiler replacement project, a co-gen, we did a co-gen rebuild. We did the SIM lab previously. We did the esports setup, which we built last year. If you want to scroll. So these are the boilers. There were three of these. Okay, these are original from the time the school started. So in three days, they cut those two pads out. These two pads were the other systems to that. So the new ones are arriving next week. So we'll have tents out here because they come in separate because there's no way to get them in. You got to put them together in the basement. And this is just some examples of it being cut down. They had to be cut down into three by three sections, every piece of it, to get it out the door. And we did a co-gen. So the co-gen had run, the recommendation for the co-gen was 80,000 hours. We had put 120,000 hours on our motor. But we've done a really great job of funding and being able to maintain it. But the guys that do the co-gen were shocked that it ran as long as it did. So we did a full rebuild on that. For those of you who don't know, the co-gen is the gray box over there in the corner. It runs on natural gas and it makes electricity. But in turn, instead of having a radiator, we take the coolant that goes through it and that feeds into the school to help heat the school, which takes the load off the boilers. So this is the one that we started a couple of years ago. This was the start of the new SIM lab, which is down in medical. And it was built with our whole crew and students. So it was two classrooms, full cinder block walls. These are some of the kids that took it down. They took that wall down in a day and a half. Then we built all the framing for it, put it all up. And that's what we have. And that's what we use now with Lateral. Pat's people at SDI use it as well. It's full Wi-Fi connected. They can view, they can film and view and observe it anywhere in the school. That's also in the room across from those beds. So that's the viewing area so that they can have the whole class in watching, live when they're working on the mannequins with just the teams without being distracted. So the esports arena, which was on top of the stage, which is there now. This is what it looked like when we started. And this is what it looks like now. We did that, that was a summer project two years ago, I believe. And the diesel shop, which is still a work in progress, but we're almost done. So we used the kids with carpentry to do the exterior and we did all the interior work. So you can scroll. So as you can see, this is what, when we started to clear it out. This is what it would look like. It was full of all tools. We organized, sorted it all out.
Six, four years of bus parts.
And this is what they came into in September. And then right next to it, used to be just an open space where they stored a couple of front ends of buses. So we took those out and we put them, tucked the building in there. So that's the related room. And it's attached to the school. And that's what, you can scroll. And that's the interior now. We just put the air handlers in and the air recovery units. And by September, this will all be done and they'll be ready to go in. Okay, and then some of the other things we've done last year. We put the new road in behind the school. The new spray booth in carpentry. So they, same thing, we bid it out. They wanted $85,000 to put it in. We found one online for 17 grand. We did it in-house. And Mark's pride and joy.
Mark and Bob.
It was.
We put in our new pickleball courts, which we're seeing on Fridays, they have a, a teacher's group goes out and uses it every Friday afternoon at the school. We've been seeing the kids using it all the time during gym class. So it was a worthwhile investment. So some of the future things that are coming up. So we all know, we've been talking about it for over a year now, the STEM building. June 24th, they're, they're going to start coming in. We'll be starting to tear things up, lock it off the roadway and we're getting ready to start. This will be in by the end of the month. So if you've gone, driven behind the school at the back of the gym, one of the things we're missing, because we, when we expanded into criminal justice, we took the field house and turned that into criminal justice and the CSI lab. So we tucked them in a little corner in sustainability. But our sports programs are so big, it just isn't enough room. So we're putting up a 20 by 80 locker room on the back of the gym for spring and fall sports. And that'll be in, we poured the pad the end of, what, last fall? And then they're coming back. The new building will be here anytime in the next two weeks. So these are projects that we did just last year. We didn't go back all five years. This is, this isn't just last summer. We didn't include any of the ones that just only took three days or less. Okay, so we had, last year's projects, we painted 34 classrooms. We did 10 office moves. And one of our rules is if we move you into a new office, you walk into a new office that's been cleaned and repainted, so it's fresh for you. You know, walking into something that's got a whole bunch of holes, it's all, you know, it's all fresh in the way you want it. Up in the guidance office, there used to be a. Up in the guidance office, there used to be a conference room in the back. We redid that and put in three offices. We moved, shifted them down into a, there was a big director's office there, we turned that into the conference room, a little bit smaller, and took the big conference room and turned it into three offices. We put in another 200 desks and chairs, and swapped out 12 teacher desks, which is something we've been doing the last few years, so we're at the point now, this is our last year. And then every desk has been changed out in the whole school. For, you know, for the classrooms, the more innovative triangular desks, the bus garage remodel, pickleball, the rebuild, the food truck, the whole interior of the food truck, we got it in. Put all the equipment in there, now we're getting ready to do the outside. So we're going to rewrap it, but that's been redone on the interior. The walk-in and culinary, we put that in, that was just a ton of storage space that they were missing, so they've had all these stand-up refrigerators. So we reconfigured things a little bit, we put in a big walk-in, and it's been very beneficial to them. Every year, we replace five to six pieces of equipment in kitchen, in the kitchen, we put in some new rationale stoves, which are restaurant and hotel quality, so we put in three of them last year. And we do all of those installs ourselves. The district suites upstairs, we repainted all of them, when we restructured over here, that was in the fall. Ceiling mounting projector, which we talked about, vape sensors, all the bathrooms in the school have vape sensors in them now. We were able to do a little research, I was able to find a company that was running a special, and we got them all at half price, with a lifetime app and cloud-based. So we found that that's been very beneficial, we also can do, so they not only have audible alarms, they have silence, which go to your phones. And we redirected all the cameras on the outside of the bathrooms, so that when that goes off, you can just look at the camera and go, okay, who is it? So they've worked out pretty well. We picked up 10 new camera locations, and we upgraded another 20, replaced them with the HDMI cameras, we replaced all the stair treads in the school, the spray booth, and we, so we upgraded all the exhaust ventilation through a grant I was able to get through Rise Engineering, which was like $120,000 for the project, and it cost us, what, $6,800? And they covered all the rest of it. And that was able to tie us into our EMS system, which, you know, we can do on our phones and on our laptops. We put in new cabinets in the counter, all hallways got painted last year, we upgraded the sprinkler systems, the bus garage, criminal justice, and sustainability, we put all new sprinkler heads in all of those. We upgraded the fire panel to make it a little more user-friendly, we did all of the NIESK checklists, we replaced all the baseball field, infields. We found that the infield mix was horrible, so every time the wind blew more than five miles per hour, you'd go blind. So we ended up digging it all out and putting in a different blend, and we've got nothing but compliments from all the teams that come and play us, because the infield's a beautiful mountain. We helped install all the cable for the exterior Wi-Fi, the new road, we've added a bunch of NIESK, additional eyewash stations, because of the NIESK report, we saw that we had a deficiency on distance in some of the shocks. So we've already done that, we took care of that. We had 483 work orders that took more than a day, we pride ourselves on responding to work orders in less than 24 hours. Even if we can't fix them, we at least let you know that we've been there, but most of them, we wipe out right when they come in. We've done, we also do all the state and federal inspections and tours, licenses, I schedule all of our fire drills, all of our lockdown drills, and work directly with the fire department for all of those. I also do tours with the fire department, which we did in February vacation, so every day for four days, they sent teams from the fire department to come in and tour the facility, so they knew, they know when they get here, exactly where they're going and what they have to do. So it works out very good for community for us, and good for them as well. We do allow them, a couple Saturdays a year, I let them come in, I meet them here, and we do some training exercises when no one's in the building, so it doesn't spook anybody. But it also, it works out great for them. And then we did the HDMI upgrade for the theater. So those are the big ones for this past year. So this summer, we have the boiler replacement, we're replacing, we're also replacing the chiller, which is the small unit, not the big one on the hill. That is 16 years old, and we had a grant from the state, so we're going to use that money, that's not costing us anything for that one. The new locker room, behind metal fab, you'll see there's a building out there with no roof on it. So we took down one last year, because that's right next to where the STEM lab's going. With the one a little further down, we took the roof off because it was all rotted, we're going to rebuild that and actually make an outdoor welding area to help the welding team that can, they can work outside but undercover. We'll be finishing the diesel-related room, the outside classroom, which is the down near criminal justice, the little block that's got Tyvek all around it, that's going to be finished off. And on the interior side, there's going to be a couple of screens and whiteboards, and criminal justice is going to use that to stage crime scenes, do some of their exercise stuff. They have an Eagle Scout early ed project that's going to start this year, down in the far corner, so they're building an outdoor classroom kind of set up with some motory skill, balance beams, some logs to do music, little xylophones, sandboxes, just to get the kids outside, but closer to the edge, you know, closer out to the woods, more natural. So I have a bunch of Eagle Scouts coming in during the summer to work on that, they'll work with us. We'll do, all the floors will get stripped and waxed this year. In culinary, one of the things we found is that we never have enough electricity. When we've done so many upgrades and additions over the years, a lot of times, they abandoned stuff in place. So there's plugs that go nowhere, there's like eight different panels that have wires in them and nothing is marked. So two of the students that we have, that we've hired, we're going to work with Tony, our home electrician, and we'll take the two weeks, we're going to tone out every line, find out which ones are good, which ones are bad, and redo all the panels. That way, it puts us in a better, a better position, and lights us up for something on our five-year plan for the next do-over room, culinary. All the sidewalks out front are getting replaced, the ones that we haven't replaced already, that'll be starting in a couple of weeks. There's new roof going on this building, they've already started the painting on the outside, they power washed and they started out back. Early ed, we're putting a new roof on, and I just bought new awnings for their covers for their students, the yellow sails out back, which are, they've all been beat up, so I have three new ones that came in. Same thing with the interior classrooms, Bob's already started doing a run, we try and do at least 20 a year. And we've been getting caught up, but every time you do 20, now you make other ones look worse. So it's a never-ending project, but, but every year, the number goes down a little bit. Routine repairs, the normal, normal everyday stuff that we do, the STEM addition, and the last ball field to do for the infield, and that's the JV softball, so we're going to be doing that one this summer as well. And there's a bunch of other little small projects, but there's a whole bunch of stuff going on. And then fortunately, the only other thing we did was, another part of my job is lining up our, our energy, controlling our energy costs, so we were able to do, signed another three-year contract for electricity, and as we all know, electricity has been outrageous. But I chase, I just keep chasing the numbers, I chase the numbers, and I talk to the different brokers that we deal with. So we were able to get our electricity locked in for the next three years for 13 cents. And then, that's per kilowatt. And then our gas, same thing, they're speculating the gas is going to rise really high next year, and we've already locked in for another three years on that for 781. So we've stayed ahead of that. Our water consumption has not risen, so we're well under the threshold that the town requires us to stay behind, so we don't have to put a waste treatment plant in.
Yeah, and finishing real quick, we cannot do this, obviously, we don't, we don't support, superintendent support, and our staff, custodians, maintenance guys, we do other stuff, I just go into events, as you guys know, and I go off and book events and everything, well, my custodians are on their own, and they do a great job. So I just have to publicly thank our staff, we tuned them in, and they've been awesome.
Yeah, our crew was fantastic.
That enables us to go off and do other stuff, which we love to do, so I just want to-
And they all work together, so I, yeah, I license operations guys, they'll pick up trash. You know, there's-
Snow removal.
There's no pride, they're the first ones in to shovel, they come in to plow, they help set up chairs, we, all our team, they're a team, and they all work together, and they think nothing of asking each other to help. And they always get it, so that's, you know, for us, we look at it, we go, okay, we're doing something right now.
You guys have any questions for us? I know, a long time, sorry.
Yeah, I'll be quick, but I, the grounds here, the facilities, and you guys that work before, everything here is awesome, and that presentation just goes to show how above and beyond you not only go to make the district look nice, but to be nice, because you involve the students and the staff, it's like a, it's a whole team thing, and I just, I hope everybody appreciates that as much as it's worth, because, I mean, you go to any other school, and I feel like we really have superior facilities, and that's thanks a lot to the two of you, and your leadership in that department, so thank you, everything here is great, and you've done a great job.
Thank you very much.
Time chair, may I? Excellent presentation. Scott, Bob, I love you too, but Scott, I see, Scott's my man. Scott's always taking care of things, but Bob, you too.
I'm the guy in the back.
You're the guy.
That's why I left Walkmark first today.
Listen, you all are awesome, and you've done, this piece of real estate looks exception, it just looks like the White House, didn't I should know, I was just there. And I'm, so I just want to tell you, thank you, thank you, and more thank you, because this presentation is important, but the students that come here, when they remark about how beautiful this place is, and I go back to Broton, you all, we stand out, and I think that's very important. But I'm going to ask the dangerous question, because of my own experience with respect to this room here. This room is not soundproof. You can hear-
So, I didn't notice.
Yeah, you didn't notice.
We didn't mention that project.
Yeah, it was done in a day or less.
Yeah, so we've, we've been working over the last, last week and this, to install acoustic panels in here, you can't, may not even be able to notice them, but there are acoustic panels there on the walls, there are acoustic panels on the inside of my office.
See the plugs are sticking out, they have to make two more to fit.
Oh my goodness, you're thinking, okay, all right.
They've insulated ceiling.
See what I'm saying? They're great.
You know, I was going to say it's on-
Next.
Yeah. Well, so let me ask you the magic question. The door. Can it, nothing can be-
Nothing I can do about that.
A second door? Can that happen, coming into, that entryway right there?
We can look at it.
You got to be egress. Right, we have to tour with the fire department.
That, that door and my door here are also, because they're pocket doors, they-
Because of the, yeah.
They're a little bit challenging.
Could you change that to a French style? That one probably, you know, this one.
Yeah, well, probably not these, we'd have to replace it with something different.
Pocket doors are something.
Thank you for that.
They are nice.
They are nice.
Do you have a question?
I do have one question. With the new addition of the STEM building, do we have to consider water treatment facility down the line?
No, there's no water. There's no water.
Okay.
That's part of the reason why we didn't put sinks in every room.
Oh, but I just mean with the increase of population, because I know we're not putting sinks, but-
Yeah.
No, waterless urinals. Yeah, we do waterless urinals.
Oh, okay.
So I, I wanted to echo what my colleagues have said, you know, I just appreciate your leadership so much, and just looking at that list, it's just exotic, just looking at it, and I'm just in awe, and every time somebody comes to this school, the first thing that they remark about is how beautiful our building is, how beautiful our grounds are, and I just really appreciate you and your staff's help with that. And I really wanted to give you a shout-out too, for graduation, in battling the pollen, and how the staff came, and they just kept going and going, going.
Wiping and wiping.
They kept going diligently, just so that everyone who attended graduation could have a good experience and not have to worry so much about that. And, you know, it sounds so strange, but that is such a nightmare, and yet, you, you staff tackled that, and so I'm just so appreciative of that, and all the hard work that, you know, we see graduation, but there's a lot of work that we don't see.
Details.
Yeah, and all the details behind it, so thank you so much for all that, and please, you know, please relay that to your staff as well.
We will.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you can be excused too, you don't have to sit with me, especially if you really want to. Okay, okay, just a second.
Scott, you're not hanging around, come on.
You're going to tackle your list, right? All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda, and I'll entertain a motion for that.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Any further discussion? If not, we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, I have it 8-0, thank you. Moving on.
Just one, I have to.
Oh.
Recused, right?
Wait, not recused here.
No, that one, no.
Right, recused for, right, when we go into the finances, yep, you're good, 8-0.
Yes.
So moving on to, I know, it's always confusing, so we are to the treasurer's cash report.
Well, it's not as exciting as what the bank does. Walking along.
This is what funds are on.
So this is the treasurer's report with the cash as of April 30th. Second page is the summary of the financial position, ending in April 30th, you see the cash balance, the receipts, expenses. It's going down towards the end of the year a little bit, but moving along. Cash flow report, total cash balance is 13.5 million dollars at the end of April. And on the next page, we have the gross pay summary report through payroll that is covered up through May 9th. Total gross pay has been 20.7 million dollars. The reconciliation report, it actually looks really good, the only thing outstanding is the checks that, you know, haven't cleared yet, and the mouse teachers put in on 5.1 as opposed to 4.30, but the other things to note, in the investment account, I broke out $2 million into a certificate, a certificate of deposit, nine months at 5%. In the school lunch account, there was also a small 91-day certificate opened up, 300,000, and then the regional transportation is about half a million dollars there that was invested at a higher interest rate, just to take advantage of the market. The next page is the budget to actual, and things are looking good, everything's come through, most of the assessments were paid by the end of May, couples came in early June, but everything's on target. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Time chair.
Thank you, yep, questions?
Is that, a little of $1 there?
Yeah, well, that's the rounding between, like, if something was in it, some of the assessments might be broken down to 0.25, so when we put that in, it would show, you know, it's over a dollar, under a dollar.
It balances it.
Yeah, it just balances it up.
The 300,000.
Everybody pays as billed.
Okay, the 300,000, what was the interest rate on that?
They're all at 5%.
They're all going to be at 5%.
Yeah, they were taken out on April 2nd, one is, two of them are 91 days, they mature on July 2nd, the other one, the investment account is in nine months.
You always give sound investment advice with respect to the school district and other people.
Thank you.
Good idea, Karen, thanks for letting me know.
Yeah, you know, I mean, the market's looking good, there might be other investments to be done over the summer, but I keep an eye on it.
We're paying attention, thank you.
Good.
Any more questions for Karen? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, so moved.
Okay, one second.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, let's bring it to a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, I have it 8-0, thank you. Moving on to the- Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administrations report, and Mark.
Yes, good evening. So, as you know on the screen already, we have an appropriated budget, so as of the end of April, or actually, pull the report, actually, I think it was June, early June. We had nine hundred and forty-three thousand, so just under a million dollars to finish out the school year. Again, we're starting to see those contracts come in for repairs and maintenance of things that are coming in, and also sort of our day-to-day expenses, so we're actually in good shape going into the last month of the school year, so we're right, right on target there. And you also see the report for the revolving accounts, those are also in good shape overall. Some last, the invoice is still going out, and some revenues coming in in those revolving accounts, but all those accounts are in good shape, and again, there as a group, as you saw in today's financial report from the auditors, so overall, they're definitely in the black and running in good, in good condition going into the last month of the school year. If you have any questions, I can answer them, and we'll take some votes, actually, in a meeting coming up on Friday, but just for any last minute offsets that we'll need going throughout the end of the school year.
Can you, Mark, can you just talk, talk about the three votes we need to take on Friday?
Yeah, yeah, so, do you want to pull them, do we have any information on them?
I don't know if I have them, but one is.
Okay, give me one second, yeah. Yeah, I have it here, give me one second. There's one's gonna be for the, a vote is for debt, so that's to instruct or authorize the district treasurer, if there are debt, and then we have to approve any, you'd give her the authorization to approve that debt. Not that we've done that in the past, but again, it just keeps us in place, though if it's needed going into the future, we have that in place. We also have one to vote for encumbrances, so any encumbrance that we have this year that doesn't get paid until, or any encumbrance that we have this year that will be paid after June thirtieth, that's still a legal liability for the FY twenty-four school year, and those will be paid on time. And also, vote for reclassification, that's for any offsets that we have to make in the FY twenty-four school year, that happen after June thirtieth, but still to reclassify in the FY twenty-four, and that's per the auditor's recommendations. But we'll go into more detail with those, and there's, I know a meeting, I believe, on Friday, is it?
So, we could not put those on the agenda for this evening because of the forty-eight hour posting rule, but those are recommendations from the auditors, we have typically taken those votes in the past, so we are going to have a special school committee meeting at eight AM on Friday, it'll be a virtual meeting to take those votes, so that Mark can continue to operate and Karen can continue to operate the school district at the end of the school year.
Those are our votes we take every year.
Madam Chair, may I ask? Holly, just a direct question, so Mark is responsible for the EDA meeting?
Oh, no, not, no, not on that.
Person that made the mistake.
I'll take full responsibility.
Sorry, Mark.
Well, we didn't want to disrupt most people's work day.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And it's virtual.
And it's virtual.
Hey, Mark, I have a question just about the audit generally, so, you know, we moved firm, we changed firms, and it sounded like there was a lot that you had to do. Now, moving forward, since you've, like, already had one audit completed by this firm, is it gonna be easier, or?
So, when you say easier, it's, it's not that it's easier or harder, what happens is you get a new firm coming in, it's just like they're kind of starting from scratch.
Right.
They want to see all our policies, procedures, now that Hagan's already has that under their belt, that's one less thing they need to do going forward. Now they'll just review any changes that we make to our policies and procedures, they don't have to go back, you know, to the beginning, right? So now they have that information, they can build upon that, and they can look at the different areas, now as they do an audit, they can look at the different areas, they can look at different programs, for instance, this year they look at the school lunch and our Pell program and the STI, next year they may look at some of our other revolving accounts, so it gives them the opportunity now to build and move forward.
I didn't mean easier or harder, I think maybe, like, the word is like more taxing, because it sounded like it involved a lot of time and energy on your part to set it up.
Yeah, so what was taxing this time, again, we had a current audit firm, they were, you know, unresponsive to us, we have deadlines to meet, so when this new audit firm came in, they have current clients, so they had to squeeze us in, and put a little crunch on us to get them information, they need it on time, so we can kind of get it back on time. So now, with this being done, they'll start in September, October.
On the regular cycle.
On their regular cycle, then we'll get the presentation probably right after Christmas time from them, instead of being in June.
Got it.
Yeah, so it'll be a little, a little less stressful, to say the least, to get the reports ready and presented. Again, because the Department of Ed's looking for our financial reports, Pell programs, STI programs looking for our financial reports, and when we don't have them completed, we can't provide them, so I have to, you know, go through that process with them, but going forward now, it's to be more on track and more back to the system we were used to.
Well, thanks for all your hard work with that, Trezor Ed.
No, it's, it's one of those things, it's, I'm glad we were able to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they seem good.
Yeah.
You did, with the new firm, do you have a multi-year contract?
Three-year contract, we have right now, so, through FY twenty-six, I believe, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
And the other thing is that, did, have we, are we planning any, on any purchases this school year for next year, like?
Yes, and you'll see it through some of the offsets I've already done, but in our next meeting, probably in August, I'll, I can give you a list of those again, that we FY twenty-five purchases made in twenty-four.
Yeah.
So as we close out the year, we will have those.
Yeah, because I know we usually do that.
Yeah, we try to do that.
Okay. Any further questions for Mark? If not, let's move on, we're at now the ratification of payroll warrants, we can do it as a batch of two, if anybody.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you accept the treasurer's report?
We, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So I can entertain a motion for that, and this is the one, Jen, that you appeased yourself on.
I move to ratify C and D, as presented.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? If not, let's take it to a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, one refusal, so the eyes have it seven, zero, one. Thank you. Next up is STEM building update.
Great. So, very excited to tell you that we have now had the kickoff meeting with our general contractor, and we had our second weekly meeting this morning. We are looking to reschedule those weekly meetings because they conflict with member Heath's schedule, and as the chair of the building committee, we, we need to figure that out. So I did reach out to the OPM today to ask them to coordinate a different meeting day that will work, so that the building committee chair can actually attend the meetings.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Very important, but things seem to be going very smoothly. Our owner's project manager, who we've worked with before, is very organized, is, is creating great meeting minutes, with clear deliverables that they're tracking. The general contractor, so far, has been very easy to work with and communicate with, so that we've set up and come up with a logistics plan for their mobilization, that will start on June twenty-fourth. For school committee members, we are looking to do a ceremonial groundbreaking on July the twenty-third, so if you want to put that in your, in your calendars.
Which is that, July twenty-third?
July twenty-third.
What time are we thinking?
That we haven't decided yet. So we'll, we'll coordinate with, with you and to, to come up with a time, those are generally in the morning, so, but we're very excited about it, and things seem to be progressing, progressing well, so, but we, and I'll work with, with Chair Heath to set up the, the building committee meetings, which don't need to be every week, but they should be at least once a month.
And Andy, that means here on out, you're gonna be reporting on the STEM building updates, so you're gonna really hold that responsibility.
I will handle it best I can.
Alright.
Be careful, be careful what you wish.
You know, Mr. Dutcher, your predecessor, used to give his reports in rhyme or poetry.
I'll do some limericks, but it ain't gonna want to be recorded.
Very true, we make it very entertaining, so we have, we have.
Yeah, that'll be a tough one, I'll have to, yeah.
And that's why I chose you, Andy.
Thank you.
Any questions on the STEM building update? Alright, moving on to the equity audit update.
So we've received a preliminary equity audit report that I've reviewed with Rob and sort of the senior leadership, and then we will roll that out to the whole leadership team this coming week, for everyone to take a look at, we are reviewing it to make sure that what's in, in, in the report is accurate, and looking at, you know, just general, generally how it's presented in, in the communication style. My plan is to make that available to you as soon as it's been approved by the leadership team, and then I thought that combining, taking that report and taking the NIASC report findings, and reviewing those with you at the school committee retreat in August, so that we can really dig down into those. But you'll have those reports well in advance, so that you can review them and, and be prepared to discuss, and of course, both of those will inform our strategic plan, that will, the strategic planning process that will begin. There are many good, I will just tell you this, there are many good things in the report, and some, and some, you know, findings about ways that we can grow and improve, that I think we were all pretty much aware of anyway, but, so I'm looking forward to sharing all of that information with you and our committees.
Any questions for Holly around the equity audit? Now, let's move on to the FY twenty-five budget update, and good news.
Good news, so we have an approved budget, eight of our nine communities have approved the budget, we have only Brockton, we do have a little bit of an issue because they scheduled us next week, at the same time as the PN nursing graduation, at a time when Mark has a conflict, so we did reach back out to them and see if they could take us on the Monday instead of on Tuesday, so I'll, I'll, I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'll let you know. I mean, I would hate, I, I could go, I just hate to skip the, the PN graduation, that's such an important event, but when I hear back from them, I'll, I'll make the game time decision on that.
Any questions around the budget update? We'll move on to the League of Women Voters Birthday Bags.
Well, I think I have to recuse myself.
So, as you know, the League of Women Voters has a birthday bag of information related to voter registration, I did receive an email from them sort of describing what's in the bag, and it's how to register, I think, you know, there's a little const- little constitution, some voter I vote stickers or voter stickers, the one thing that I would suggest that we don't accept is they had like candy or a gift card or whatever, I don't think we should accept gifts, I don't think students should be given gifts related to voting, and, and I think it's fine for us to distribute the information, but I would ask that we not actually have any registration of students on, on the school property, I believe that's something that they should do themselves, or do in, in collaboration with their families, and, so, but I think providing voter registration information is perfectly appropriate for, for seniors.
How would you anticipate rolling that out?
We would want to roll it out in, when's the, the deadline for voter registration?
I think it's, it's ten days before the election, so we're talking November fifth.
Yeah, so probably early October.
Yeah, I would think it's a good time, I think October twenty-sixth or something is the registration deadline, but I would think early October would be that.
Early October, maybe for our social studies program.
Yeah, and do it on an academic week for seniors.
Yeah.
That, that is probably something that is taught in our social studies slash civics slash, so it's.
I would like to think so.
I would, I would, I would hope so, but I, I'm gonna ask, so it's already something we're kind of doing, so now there's just kind of a handout on how to do it.
Information. Any questions about this initiative?
How's the distribution gonna happen?
I, we would do it through, I think, social studies program.
So literally what Andy's saying, okay, alright.
And just make it available, students can take it or not take it, but, you know, just make it available through the social studies programs.
I thought this was specialized to Stowe, and it's not, you're just gonna do it for all students?
No, it's for all students.
Okay. So we need, we do need a vote on this. So the motion is to approve the distribution of voter registration information to senior
With the caveat of what Holly has identified, right?
Correct.
Okay, so gonna move to approve the distribution of voter registration information as presented by the superintendent to the stu- to seniors.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, let's bring it to a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
I abstain.
Right, and so that's six, one, and one abstention. Alright, thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed one.
So it's six, yay, one nay, one abstention.
Who was that, who was that?
Kelsey.
Thank you? I am wrong.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you. Next up is new business and the COLA increase for non-federation employees.
Alright, so, as you know, we have negotiated a cost of living adjustment with the Federation based on what step they are in their, in their salary schedule, so it's two percent for up to step five and three percent above that. Historically, the school committee has voted to extend the cost of living increases to all staff, including the non-federation employees, so that's what we are asking you to do again this year, is to approve the cost of living adjustment effective July first for our year-round staff, and September first for our school year staff, as well as to extend the recruitment retention bonus that we negotiated with the Federation, and that's also been historically what the school committee has, has done each year, so asking for that again this year.
Any questions for Holly? Yes, this is two.
Legitimate?
Yes.
So this budget.
Yeah, more for Mark than Holly.
Yeah, we would carry it, yeah, by twenty-four and twenty-five.
So your plan for this budget is not, not a surprise, not a shock.
Any further questions? Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the COLA increases for non-federation employees based upon the language that's identified in the agenda.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, eyes have it, eight zero. Alright, now we're moving on to the reports of the committees and administrators, and we'll start with our legislative liaison, Barbara.
The negotiations are now underway in the State House before Governor Mara Healy gets a compromise bill on her desk. For us, we're very pleased to know that Senator Cronin's blind lottery bill is off the table for both the House and Senate, so at least we're safe for twenty-five, and that's a good thing, they're, they've made, and I've been giving it out all along, the things that the hundred and four per pupil minimum increment was bumped to a hundred, a hundred and ten per pupil, seven point five million in the House budget was level funded, and there were a number of other things, but I've been giving you note in the interest of time, that, those are the main things, there'll be some horse trading, I'm sure, for a lot of the bills and amendments, but most of the things that relate to us, we know about now, but our, our main concern was the lottery, which would have affected us adversely, and we're pleased to know that's not gonna happen.
There was no change in reimbursement for regional transportation, we're still at about eighty-four percent.
Yeah, well.
Close, but no secret.
We got the one in the lottery.
Yeah, we knew about that, but it was, there were things we can't change, right?
Any questions for Barbara?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
On the bill, or the question that we put about bus collusion, is that what it was? Or bus?
Yeah, that was a resolution last year.
Okay, do we have any information on that progress, on if they're looking into that, if they're doing any research?
I can look into that for you.
Okay.
Cool. Any other questions? Thank you, Barbara. Next up is the Personnel Subcommittee Report, and Jerson.
Hey. So, yeah, at the Personnel Subcommittee meeting that we held on May twenty-eighth, we engaged in productive discussion regarding various positions, and we conducted a thorough deliberation, I would say, and we made some revisions to some of the job descriptions that we hadn't looked at in a little while, and we also looked, I believe that was one new position, I believe, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and also looked at some sal- Um, and, uh, also looked at some salaries, um, that needed to be adjusted. But I'll leave all the fine details to our superintendent.
Thank you, Jerson.
Um, so let's start with, um, the proposed revision to the school psychologist, um, job description. Um, so, um, we are get, uh, getting ready, we've actually made an offer to a new school psychologist. This would increase, uh, the number of school psychologists from one to two. Um, and so anytime we take, you know, go out to, uh, post for a position that we haven't looked at the job description a little while, we'll bring it up and, and go through it and revise. Um, and over the, I think this one was one of those that hadn't been looked at in about fifteen years. Um, so a lot has changed about the role of the school psychologist. Um, so I worked with the Director of Special Education, who, um, is the super direct supervisor of the position, to, um, update the qualifications, to sort of be more concise about the job goal, um, and then to really go through and look at, um, the work of the, the school psychologist in very, in the various areas of expertise that they're involved in, from assessment to counseling. Um, then we'll fix the formatting of all these things, um, when they're, when they're finalized. You know, consulting and collaborating with staff across the, across the building, across vocational academic settings. Um, you know, working with crisis intervention. Uh, they will be part of our new threat assessment team, so, uh, you'll be hearing us talk about C-stag and threat assessment. We actually had, um, all of our, almost all of our leadership team, counselors, um, our SRO, behavior management, um, all completed six hours of online training and four hours of in-person training around threat assessment. So that's, for example, if a student says, I'm gonna kill that guy, right, that's a threat. Is it a transient threat, is it a threat we need to take seriously? Um, and so really going through and establishing an evidence-based protocol was developed by the University of Virginia and, um, the FBI in the wake of the Virginia Tech shooting. Um, and so this is, this is in place in school districts across the United States. And it's, it just sets out a very clear protocol of how to work through a threat assessment with a team that has been trained and comes from various, um, uh, areas of expertise. So you'd have the school psychologist, you would have a behavior management person. If it's a very serious situation, you would have your SRO there, so figuring out who to have on the team with you. So, um, anyway, that person would, would, uh, be part of this and provide advice to the threat assessment team. So, um, you know, pretty comprehensive look at the, uh, the job description. Um, the salary is aligned with the, um, teacher salary schedule. This is not a Federation position, but the salary's always been aligned as a, um, as a, with the teacher salary schedule. So, as you can see, the last time it was reviewed was two thousand and seven, so it was probably time.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions about this role in particular? Do you want to take them one at a time, or do you want to go take the motion at the end? You know, why don't we do them one at a time, just because there's a lot here?
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion for this first one, so that would be the first bullet point.
Motion to approve the, uh, revisions to the scho- school psychologist position as outlined by the Personnel Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now, let's bring it to a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, ayes have it, eight zero. Thank you. Next one, Assessment Administrator.
Hey, so this is a new position, um, that we are proposing, and I'm gonna ask, um, our Vice Principal of, of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, um, to, to join with me in sort of, uh, describing this. So this person, um, would be responsible for sort of coordinating the logistics for all of our school-wide testing. Um, if any of you have been involved in testing, you know that getting MCAS ready is a major undertaking. Um, and we, here's just a list of some of the testing that we conduct throughout the year. Um, and it is a full-time job in and of itself to coordinate logistics, make sure students are getting the accommodations that they need, um, you know, working across departments to ensure you have the right proctors and the right rooms, that you're following all the regulations regarding data privacy and data security. Um, it is, it is an intensive job. So we are, um, proposing this as a school year plus position, so one hundred and ninety-three days, and, um, and at a salary range that's sort of aligned to the top end of the teacher salary schedule. This person, um, does provide training to staff, uh, throughout the year, but they do not directly supervise anyone. Um, and so the salary range is not as high as some, like a academic supervisor who does have, you know, thirty-something people that they're supervising. Um, so, I think it's a, a, a very, uh, much needed position. This was budgeted for, um, and, and included in our budget presentation in the school committee earlier this year.
Any questions about this position? Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the as, the new Assessment Administrator's role as presented by the, as approved already by the Personnel Subcommittee.
Second. Any further discussion? Now, let's bring it to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So that was seven, one, zero. Kelsey, you opposed?
No, I meant to say yes, I was just slow with my words.
Okay.
Knowing is half of that.
Yeah, I'm still making a decision in my head.
That's fine. Alright, next up.
Part-time teacher hourly rates. So we have presented this to the Policy Subcommittee, the TI Subcommittee, um, and now, um, had to come back to Personnel so that they could also review it. Um, and it is basically to increase, uh, compensation for our part-time teachers and to add additional steps so that they have a way to progress. We have wonderful part-time evening teachers, some of whom have been with us for years and years and years, and have only ever received a few extra pennies an hour, um, with the, uh, with the cost of living increase every year. Uh, this is fully funded through the tuition revenues from, from the TI, so it is, it has no negative impact on the, on the budget. Um, and it also allows us to, um, once a teacher reaches five years of, of employment or it gets to level five, we can give them a longevity bonus as well. So I think this is, uh, very well deserved by our, our amazing evening school teachers who support our adult learners so well.
Any questions about this? I'll entertain a motion. So this would be, um, bullet point three.
Move to accept the revisions to the Technical Institute part-time hourly rates as recommended by the Superintendent and the Personnel Subcommittee.
Oh, oops, sorry, I jumped in on there, any further discussion? If not, we'll bring it to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, ayes have it, eight zero. Thank you. And then lastly.
Alright, so, um, as we were reviewing our policies this year, uh, with Chair Branch on the Policy Subcommittee, um, it became clear that the Superintendent is supposed to report out and make recommendations to the School Committee about district administrator and high school administrator compensation. Um, so I have reviewed all of the, we've reviewed all the high school administrators at a previous meeting, and so now we're at the district administrators. I'm gonna bring up the, um, Director of the Technical Institute, um, so, who I have made no, uh, job changes to the, um, performance responsibilities. Um, and at this time, I am not making a recommendation to increase the salary, but I am gonna ask the School Committee to allow me to do further research, um, into the salary. Um, for those of you who don't know, we have the largest post-secondary public technical institute in the state. Um, and there are very few sort of comparables that I can sort of look at, Pat, sorry, Pat. I can look at the director's salary versus someone in a similar position. So what I'm gonna ask the School Committee is to allow me a little additional time to do some research, um, into comparable, comparable positions, um, so that I can en- ensure that we are equitably compensating the Director of our post-secondary institute. Um, so for now, as of July first, there's no change, but I may come back to you in, in September and, um, with additional information.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move to postpone the decision on the Director of the Technical Institute until the School Committee meeting of September twenty-twenty-four.
Any further discussion? Take it to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion passes eight zero.
Alright, um, again, the Executive Director of Access and Engagement is relatively new position. Um, so you have very recently reviewed these, uh, job descriptions. I'm not making any suggestions for, um, changes to the job description. I am not making any suggestion for changes to the salary, um, schedule. What I have done, though, is just to include the FY twenty-four adjusted, uh, salary, um, in here. So this is important for me as a historical record, because every time I go back, so I don't have to keep trying to calculate what the current salary schedule is. Um, so, uh, with your permission, I'm going to update this based on the COLA vote. Um, so it'll actually be that, that salary schedule times three percent.
Do we have any others in the batch that are solely like this?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, let's batch them and then do a motion on those.
Okay, so the Executive Director of Access is, is no changes. The Executive Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion, no changes. The Technical Director, Technology Director, no changes, and those are all on the same salary schedule. So the salary rate I just showed you is the same for all of them.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the Executive Director of Access and Engagement, Executive Directs, Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion, no.
Yes.
Both, right, and the Technology Director as proposed in the package.
Second. Any further discussion? Now, we'll take it to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes eight zero.
Quick question?
Yes.
Holly, do you wanna just go back to the, um, salary range pretty please? Any, any, any of ones we haven't changed? Do you wanna just, I mean, I see that it's sitting there, it just drives me crazy. Do you just wanna make that a footnote, that's what, what you're doing? Just move it as a footnote or no? Do you like it like that?
Well, it's a, it's a good document for Deb and I, like, so if I, if I right now wanna say, okay, what's the salary range? I, it's, it's very easy for me to pull the job description.
So no one else is gonna see this on the job, but that's gonna be
No, they do, it's a public record.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking, do you just wanna make a footnote saying that you added the range stick for the purposes of whatever?
Yeah, so I said
You see what I mean?
Yeah, no change recommended salaries updated to reflect the COLA's vote of bias.
Well, I'm about to get that one sixty-four, I could see that. Somebody looking at that, right?
Um, so
So, I mean, that's just housekeeping you all, there's nothing, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we post a job, which we should say what the compensation was.
And we do.
Oh, no, we, we, the range has to be, yeah.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were saying, okay.
Yeah, no, for the job, uh, for, but she's doing it like in that format for her re, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Um, so the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration, um, as you know, this is the second most highest ranking and, and, um, position in the school district. It's the second oldest superintendent in terms of responsibility and risk. Um, and when the position was created, some, I, I don't even know how many years ago, and I'm just, you can see how the, the level of complexity and the level of responsibility, um, that's there. It was classified at the same range, as the same salary range as a, um, Director. So I am proposing an increase in the salary for the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration, and I wanna sort of give you some, some additional information around that, if I can figure out how to do this. That's cool, I didn't, no, that didn't work. I'm trying to do a split screen, it's not cooperating with me. Hang on. I apologize. Okay, so, um, in, in doing my comparison, making my recommendation to the School Committee, um, so, uh, as a starting place, the Assistant Superintendent is paid on the Director's salary schedule. So that's equivalent to the Director of Technology, the Director of the Technical Institute, the Vice Principal of Curriculum, the Vice Principal of Students' Ford Services, the Director of Guidance, the Executive Director of Access and Engagement, the Executive Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion. They are paid nine percent less than the High School Principal. Um, so, let me, so in our organizational chart, the Assistant Superintendent is here and they are paid at the same level as folks two and three levels below them in the organizational chart. Um, so I did do a salary comparison with, um, Bristol Plymouth Diamond and Greater New Bedford, which are three of our regional school, uh, vocational school districts here in southeastern Massachusetts, um, each of whom pay the Assistant Superintendent between four and five percent, um, more than the High School Principal. Um, I also looked at a K- twelve regional where they're paid eight percent more than the High School Principal and, uh, a K- twelve urban school district in Framingham where it was about six percent versus southeastern where we pay, uh, nine percent less than the High School Principal. Um, so based on that, I believe that the Assistant Superintendent's salary is disclassified as a Director, and I am proposing an adjustment to the compensation to align the Assistant Superintendent's salary schedule with the Principal's salary schedule, um, based on the organizational structure and the level of responsibility within the district. So I'm asking that we bring the Assistant Superintendent's compensation level with the Principal, not in excess, and we are still, um, a little bit, uh, off with the comparison to our other regional vocational school districts. Um, and, uh, that would, that would result in a three point two percent increase in his salary, in that salary for FY twenty-five, and it's a three point three percent average increase from step to step. I do like to look at how we compensate our administrators versus how we're compensating our teachers. I think that is a very, uh, important bellwether, and so the average teacher increase between steps is about five point four percent. Um, so I believe that this is a reasonable, uh, compensation increase for the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Administration based on the level of responsibility in the organization.
Any questions for Holly about this?
Do you know, um, how do we com, so, I see like the comparison percent-wise, but like, how do we compare? Like, if we take that, this is like the Principal's schedule, right? How do we compare to those schools, like, dollar to dollar?
Well, that's, that's not an apples-to-apples comparison, right? Because the comparison is about, we pay very well. Our, all of our administrators are very, very well compensated, that is not an issue. Um, but the comparison is between the level of responsibility in the organization. Is the, is the position equitably compensated?
No, right, I just, I guess I was just wondering, like, in that research, like, how do, you know, assuming we move that position to the schedule, like, is that also, like, I guess, you know, like, Greater New Bedford is, like, a similar size to us? I don't know, but you say we're well compensated comparatively?
Yeah, some are larger, some are smaller.
Yeah, you're just talking about, like, the, the dollar amount on the range.
Yeah, like, are we, on the low dollar range, are we on, like
Our administrators are very well compensated, that is not the issue. The issue is equ- equity among our own physicians.
That makes sense.
Jerson asks, the Chair of Personnel, um, what is your recommendation for this?
Uh, no, uh, I think myself and, and all the, uh, the rest of the me, uh, members of Personnel, we are, uh, fully in favor of, um, approving and moving, um, the schedule from the disposition to the principal. And like, uh, Holly said earlier, it's, uh, it's, we're, we're almost fixing a, or trying to kind of fix a, uh, an, uh, a mistake that was done ourselves. Um, so that's why we are, we are in favor of, of moving, and, and even so, the compensation, we're still not at par really with some of the other ones, uh, so, but, um, I think it's a good start. It's something that could be probably looked at maybe in a few years down the line, we can look at this again. Uh, so I'm in, I'm in favor of, um, uh, approving, uh, this, this move.
Any further questions for Holly? Yeah?
Do we, just thinking about this, I don't know, going through the personnel, do we know why it was classified under Director? Was it was because there was two Assistant Superintendents at one point?
Perhaps.
Was that, you know, the load was shared at that point, so maybe that's, you know, just just running it in my head.
I historically believed that there was an increase, a shift in the Principal's salary schedule that that the Assistant Superintendent's salary schedule didn't didn't shift with it. Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, well, let's take this to, or actually, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve the salary change for the Assistant Superintendent.
Well, is it salary change or?
Reclassification.
Reclassification.
Yeah, just want to be careful with that.
Or adjustment.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight zero. Thank you.
For reasons I do not understand, I could now not get my.
I was wondering what was going on.
Yeah.
I'm telling you. So I don't believe we have a Principal's report today?
We do not.
Okay, so we'll move on to the T I Director's report.
And I'm trying to pull your.
That's okay. I can talk in the back anyway. So we did, we were notified officially that we did get the C T I grant, the Career Technical Initiative Grant for culinary culinary and welding, but have expanded it this year to this coming round for machine tool as well. So we'll be running a welding program this summer and starting machine tool in September and then culinary in September too. So we're excited and glad to have the food truck up and running. So that'll be great. And so the grant is basically focused on unemployed and underemployed students. It's for two years. And I think with this one, we're serving potentially a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty students.
Oh, my goodness gracious. Awesome.
Just in general, I, you know, I'm trying to highlight some of the things that go on in the T I. The Pacific Dental Foundation has been a strong supporter of the T I Dental Assisting Program. They came in this year and did mock interviews with the students and there were some job offers out of it. Pacific Dental is a large dental company that owns lots of smaller practices, right? So it's more of a corporate entity in the in the dental field, which we're just really starting to see here in Massachusetts. And they gave one of our students, Kayla Johnson, a large scholarship, the Carol, Dr. Carolyn Gazu Dental Assisting Scholarship. So that was exciting for her. And the students are working on their their program certifications. It's one thing that we're always focused on, like, what's the best certification for the students at any given time? And so the medical assistants have, this year took two certifications exam. Exams, the Registered Medical Assisting and the Certified Medical Assistant Exam. It was a hundred percent pass rate on the Registered Medical Assisting Exam, which we're very excited about because we've been considering transitioning to that exam. It was about, there were fewer of them who passed the Certified Medical Assisting Examination, which is why we were looking at change because nationally only fifty-one percent of the people who take the C M A are successful. So you got to wonder, right?
Yeah.
Where it's something like seventy-two percent or seventy-five percent of the R M A student certification people pass. So so I think we're going to relook at the data, but I think that will probably be a transition we'll make for the coming school year. But we were fortunate this year to let the students do both, so we could kind of compare. And the nerd, the dental assistants sat for their Certified Dental Assisting Exam today. We don't have any results yet. Hopefully that went well. We did move the graduation to the SPAC for next week or tomorrow night, not next week, tomorrow night. Mostly because we have about seventy graduates and we did it in the SPAC. We had to limit receiving to four per student. And we had requests of like sixty-four additional tickets. And I really hate to limit them if we don't have to. And so unfortunately, the day of the high school graduation, we requested that change. And Scott and Bob just said, sure. So so that was good. So we're doing that. And then the nursing graduation will be in the gym as well for that reason as well because this is the first combined day and evening nursing graduation. So, you know, we realign the nursing program. One of the benefits is we get to graduate a bigger group all at the same time, so. So we're excited about that. We have our last tease test coming up on Thursday and a nursing orientation on Friday. And we're running some drop in tours. That's it for the T I.
Lot going on. When you say that's it, I'm like, whoa.
Thank you for the salary increases for the part times.
That was important.
Moving on, it's my report. I'm just going to be brief. I think Pat talked about graduation tomorrow and next Tuesday. I hope that everyone can attend. They're always really powerful and special and I hope you can all be there to to support our students at the T I. You know, I just appreciate, I just appreciate everyone for showing up at graduation. I thought it was a really wonderful ceremony and loved shop teachers giving out the diplomas. I thought that was a really nice touch this year. And that's about it. You know, we have all those dates for those who are running for reelection. And then we will not have a July meeting, but we will have our meeting in August.
We're having two meetings in August or just the one retreat?
Just one, and it will be the longer meeting where we will start just the School Committee to to talk about Holly's evaluation and then it will resume as a full meeting, followed by dinner.
What time will we start in there?
What does it say, one o'clock?
One to three for the School Committee and then three for reelection.
Did we find a location?
Yep, so it's going to be at Stone Hill again, same same spot.
I have one thing I'd like to add.
Yeah, of course.
Next Monday night.
I have so many questions.
Next Monday night, N A S C Division Three, which is southeastern Mass, which we are part of, is having a meet and greet at the Boston Tavern, which is right on one oh six. And it's just, it's just a nice time to get together with other School Committee members. And it's very informal. We'll have light supper, whatever. So anybody who's interested, please, I think there's a link to register. I don't know if you got the emails about it. But the other thing is there is a face next Monday night, the seventeenth, the seventeenth at six o'clock. It's, you just have to register. It's free of charge. And as I say, it's just a nice time to get together with other people in the area.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. Alright, next up is Executive Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion's report and Dr. Rob.
Can I just keep saying that because it just sounds great?
Congratulations.
Good evening. So just like, you know, a few things. I know that you wanted the retention report, so we did include them this week. So if you can peruse through that. So we have our employees who are exiting, as you can see there, through retirement and where they are going, moving out of state, looking as well as, you know, going closer to home. So it wasn't because there was a lot of issues or anything. Our retention this year, I think, is going to exceed, I mean, it's going to be much better than it was from the previous year, which is outstanding for our school district as well. We started to see some of those individuals leave, you know, because they have done some great job, great things here, but that's part of it. Hiring, as you can see, some of some of the internal hirings that we have, we have made several offers, but we can't put them out there yet because they're not exactly official yet. And so they have accepted, but these are the internals that have accepted. Some of the moves that are happening right now for our internal teachers, our Special Ed Department, Common Strands and E S L teacher. So, you know, really excited about that.
Rob, are the special education teachers here, is that part of that pipeline to try and move folks up from within?
Absolutely. So part of our, part of our goal, and this really, they're not part of the first group because we're still designing that out, is creating that pathways program for all of our professionals here in order to move. And our goal is to take, you know, a lot of individuals who are paraprofessionals or teachers that, you know, paraprofessionals that want to be teachers or teachers that want to be administrators and really giving them the tools necessary in order for them to 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 get there. And as you can see, several several of our paraprofessionals have moved to other positions within our schools, which is, you know, great for our students, great for their careers as well. So that is part of it. So we're starting to see that happening more and more. Part of our new hire check-ins with our new teachers and paraprofessionals have been key in doing that. Melissa is, you know, we coordinate to meet with the new hires four times a year. And those, and we develop trends. We get information. We hear about what their experiences are. And they've really appreciated that. So it's been something that's been excellent for our newer, for our newer employees. And our next iteration is developing something for our more veteran employees as well, just so that way they're getting the constant check-ins as well. But, you know, we wanted to pilot, you know, with our new employees because, you know, retention is highly important and we're we're looking to cater that to our existing employees as well. As you can see, this is really just a measure of just all of the different job openings and things that are there and then where we are through, you know, hiring and some of our substitutes and some of the things that are open. But a lot of those positions are being filled right now. And so with the next report, you'll see us closing on those those positions. Some of them are also open a lot. Bus drivers, cafeteria worker are open a lot. Substitutes will constantly be open throughout the course of the year. As I mentioned earlier as well, outstanding community member, I mean, our new hire check-ins with the teachers and paraprofessionals have gone well. We're wrapping that up here in June. And as well as the outstanding community member lunch, which will be tomorrow with with Holly, and which is, you know, a great, great, great thing that's happening here today. We went around, Holly and Melissa went around to basically award the winners for this month. So our third, this is our third month of nominations for southeastern of our outstanding community member awards. And we had another great month, responses from administrators, faculty, staff and students. We also received numerous nominations from our S T I students showing overwhelming support for S E I staff members. The past, so today, Lauren Galant, who was just actually here, was recognized as, for the academic side, Michelle Packard, early education teacher for vocational, and Mead, which is our media specialist, as a staff member. And Bobby Walsh for S T I, a teacher, was our outstanding contributors for this month that were recognized. So we're really proud and happy for them. And just like I said before, in previous meetings, not just they are recognized, all other educators, staff members, teachers, no matter what position they are, if they have received nominations, we do recognize that and let them know about it and send them a little blurb from what people said about them, which is a great feel-good thing. So they feel that they're belonging and that they, you know, they feel that they belong and they're really happy about it. And the turn, the expressions that they, that a lot of the teachers are and and staff members are putting forward are, it's pretty exciting to see there that is starting to work. So we'll continue doing that. Obviously, we are, we're done until September. In September, we pick it back up for the next, for the next school year. Athletics, just to give a quick, just kind of give a quick shout to what's happening in athletics. Spring season softball, boys and our softball team and our boys lacrosse teams qualified for their respective tournaments. Our track and field teams had multiple athletes compete in post regular season in the Panathla, Panathalon. And and the three championships at Bridgewater State University was was held on May twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. And many of our students placed during that. One of our students, Joe Cook, will, has complete, competed in the New England Championships in New, at University of New Hampshire this past Saturday. And so I don't know exactly the results. I didn't get that yet. But the kid is fantastic and was was part of that. Yesterday, we did have our athletics banquet, which two hundred and eighty-three of our student athletes were recognized and got letters and pins and almost, and almost a close to a thousand people showed up to the event, which was end up being a big event. It was very successful. And we're looking to not, this was the last one where we're doing a big celebration. We're going to break it up into three set, to all three seasons next year, just so that was a little bit more intimate. A thousand people is a lot to handle, so we're going to make sure that we do it three times. So that way, you know, especially students who play multiple sports, they, you know, they don't have to make a decision at the end of the year, like which, you know, you know, one group is celebrating, who to do it with, they can do it with their groups season by season. Finally, in D E I, Diversity and Equity Inclusion, wrapped at the end of the year meetings with our C, which is our southeastern equity advancement teams and our employee resource groups, planning for the fall has begun. This year has been extremely successful in a sense of just really understanding, grabbing a plan. And I think with our equity audit, S R A, and really putting things together, a lot of these groups have some responsibilities of really overlooking at how we can create more access and inclusion for spaces. As I mentioned last time, we really had conversations about our school events, dances, things of that nature to really help support our students and where these groups have really have, you know, really have taken the lead in doing that. So it's really showing a true community effort. And then Holly had, we had spoke early about the school readiness, preliminary audit, and so more information about that to come as we move forward. Thank you.
Any questions?
On the internal candidates that have moved up and taken positions, have we backfilled their position? Because knowing how important paras are to the rest of our staff.
Yeah, so those are, some of them are just being posted because they, you know, we didn't know who were going to get those positions. And so now some of them are posted and the interview process has been done.
So last year, we we have a very strong history here of promoting paraprofessionals to the teacher ranks. Last year, we had five paraprofessionals who became teachers and we are on track to exceed that number this year. So and then I also want to give Rob and Melissa real kudos because paraprofessionals, for any of you who work in a school district, know are are some of our hardest working folks. They are required to be more flexible than just about anybody in the building. They hold the cover of classes. They are moved from room to room. Sometimes they don't work with the same teacher consistently. And 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 their working conditions can be very challenging. So Rob and Melissa have been working very hard on meeting with them, here, listening to them. And and then in turn, we've been working with our administrators to see if we can provide a little more stability in their day-to-day roles. So, you know, kudos to Rob for helping us continue to advance paraprofessionals, but also just to recognize the value a paraprofessional brings to the school district and helping make their experience a little more positive. So I appreciate that very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for the promotion information. It was wonderful. Wonderful to finally see it.
And we'll make that a regular part of it. Alright, I just to piggyback, I did get to go around and distribute the outstanding community member awards to our staff members today. And let me tell you something, when the superintendent, the H R person walks into the room. The initial, the initial reception is not always positive, right? They're like, what are you doing here? And then I'm like, ah, you got the door. It's all good. But I had at least one teacher today whose face just fell and I was like, oh.
You need to carry a balloon.
Yeah.
There you go.
The first time we did have balloons.
Oh, never got.
I'll keep my report very, very brief. I just want to thank all of our administrators, faculty and staff for the amazing, amazing job they did for graduation. And like you said, with our facilities folks who worked themselves to death trying to keep the pollen off of the seats so that people didn't have to worry about sitting down in a, in a whole bunch of pollen. So it was a very, a very good, relatively few issues or concerns. I did want to provide an update on the principal search to the School Committee. You may have seen the email that went out. We had identified four finalists. One has withdrawn their application, so we have three finalists. Um, we are interviewing Thursday, Monday, and Tuesday. Um, and then we'll be able to make a decision after that. And I know Rob was gonna follow up with the person who withdrew, um, to get information about, um, that decision.
Can we know who withdrew?
Yeah, it was in the email.
It was.
It was in the email. No, I didn't see who withdrew in the, I didn't see that one. My fault.
It was like this afternoon.
Yeah. It was. So, um, but we have, you know, we have three strong candidates who come from different backgrounds, um, but all have something, uh, to bring to the table. So we're gonna do the same thing we did last year with the Vice Principal Search in the sense that we're gonna have an open forum where all staff can come and meet with, uh, um, the, the candidate, ask questions. Um, the adminis- high school administrative team will get an opportunity to meet individually, one on, not as a group, with that, um, of the candidates and ask the questions that are relevant to them and their positions. Um, Mark and I will meet with, um, the candidates and ask questions that are relevant to us and our position. We'll have a student group meet with a candidate and, and they'll be able to provide feedback. Um, and as I have shared with the group, when we did the Vice Principal Search, our students provided the most in-depth feedback of any group in the building. And they were honest, they were, no, they were very straightforward. Like if any, they were very clear about what they liked, what they didn't like, what was the strength, what was the weakness. Um, and so, and it was very, very useful in, in helping make decisions. That's generally been, been well received. So, um, that's what we're hoping to do this time again, is to get really good, positive feedback from staff, um, and students and be able to sort of take all of that in and make an informed decision. So, that is my report and we, do you need to go into the.
Uh, you, you for that.
Oh.
Um, just want to kind of, uh, clarification for the folks at home, that, can you tell us how we came down, how we cut down to the four, the final of, yeah, or?
Um, yep, uh, Rob and Melissa led a search committee of teachers, guidance counselors, behavior management. Is there a paraprofessional?
Yep.
Yep. Um, and they reviewed the applications, they conducted preliminary interviews, and the finalists were selected through that process with my input as well, so.
Any further questions? I thought I moved to go into executive session according to chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, paragraph eighty-three, which is necessary to discuss strategy in respect to negotiations because an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and to not reconvene in open session to adjourn the meeting.
Roll call vote.
Oh, yeah.
Tony. Christine.
Yes.
Kelsey.
Yes.
Andrew. Barbara.
Yes.
Jerison.
Yes.
Jen.
Yes.
Robin.
Yes.
Thank you. Me too.
I'll double check the.
And Holly, am I staying or leaving? Okay.
Is Rob gonna, uh?
So Kelsey, what is your concern?
I don't know.